Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Araratville City Council meeting. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And we will actually end the meeting with our pledges. Councilor Hall.
Acknowledge the traditional owners of the land which we meet today. Pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging.
Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us. The elected councillors of the Araratville City Council guide our deliberations. Possible, what is your will for us? For your honour and glory, welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in Araratville City.
The councillors pledge. We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interests of the people of the municipal district of the Araratville City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and to discretion vested in us under the Local Government Act 1989 or any other act, the best of our skill and judgement.
Thank you, councillors. I'll call for any apologies.
No apologies.
Okay. Declaration of the Disposal of Interest to any councillors having an interest, they wish to do. No. Reports requiring council decision.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. The first item on tonight's agenda is the election of the mayor. The election of the mayor is necessary as a result of the recent resignation of former councillor McLean. Since that time, our deputy mayor, councillor Allwood, has been in the role as acting mayor. And tonight arrangements have been made to elect a mayor for the remainder of this mayoral term, from until the end of October this year. Under the standing orders in our local law, it's a requirement that the CEO conduct the election. So I now have pleasure in calling for nominations for the election of mayor for the remainder of this term. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Bull, no, I nominate councillor Coindale. Second by councillor Bill Barrow.
Okay, do I have any other nominations? If not, have pleasure in declaring councillor Allwood elected mayor for the remainder of this term. I'll hand the chair back to our mayor. And that occasions a vacancy for deputy mayor. So there is a recommendation there that the council determine whether it wishes to elect a deputy mayor. If so, we'll conduct an election for that.
Have a second, then. Councillor Barrow. Always in favour?
It's carried.
Sorry. Okay. Now, call for nominations for the deputy mayor. Councillor Joe Armstrong. Councillor Barrow, seconded. Any further nominations? Always in favour? Against?
Carried.
Our second report tonight, Madam Mayor, is the appointment of council delegates to committees. Once again, there are some vacancies that have been caused with resignation of former councillors McLean and Ford. And the first of those is for the Grahampines Central West Waste and Resource Recovery Region.
Do I have a nomination?
I was wondering whether councillor Hall might want to...
Deja vu. Councillor Hall, will you accept that nomination? Always in favour?
Against, carried.
The next one is the Wickliffe Action Group and the Wickliffe Recreation Reserve. A nomination for those, either one or two.
I nominate councillor Doug George for...
Councillor Barrow, is nominated councillor George. Councillor George, were you...
I'm not in the moment.
You're declining?
Yeah.
Any further nominations? I could actually do it. Councillor, happy with that? I could go to Wickliffe. Okay, someone?
Um...
Thank you councillor Hill. A second, then. Councillor Hall. Always in favour? I'll take up both those appointments, councillors, if you're happy with that. Thank you. We now move on to the submissions for the draft budget 2018/2022. So we need to accept. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has developed its draft rating strategy and budget for the forthcoming year. That budget and strategy have been out on public exhibition now for their required 28 days. As a result of that, 24 submissions were received. And of those 24 submissions, 11 have elected to be heard by the council. And tonight is an opportunity for those presenters to address the council and present their submissions. The normal process is that submitters will be invited to come up to the lectern, present their submission to the council. Councillors have all been given a copy of every submission received, so you can take it that they've all been read. There is a time limit under our local laws of three minutes per submission. And if anyone feels that a previous speaker has already addressed their concerns or their issues, there's no need to restate it if you feel justice has already been done to your submission. The process beyond tonight is that later tonight, once submissions have been heard, the council will formally receive them. And they will be dealt with at the next council meeting on the 26th of June, when the council formally considers adopting its budget and rating strategy. So in order to get underway, we'll invite submitters up in the order that their submission was received. We'd invite submitters to present to the council. At the end of each submitter, if councillors have any particular questions of their submission, they'll have some time to ask a question. And then we'll move on to the next submitter. So first submitter is Peter Oddie, who's requested the opportunity to speak. So Mr. Oddie, would you like to come up here?
It's like going in the lion's den, isn't it? Okay. Madam Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen that are here. It would appear that the lid is far from shut on Pandora's Box, which I referred to at the last chance we had to speak. I was quite concerned when I sat down and read today Darren Ford's submission referring to the Tattie Umm Bunyip aristocracy. And I felt that that could almost be considered as slanderous. I wasn't happy. I'm sure they are, whoever they are. The rural and city people need each other. And we can do without the attempts to create the divides between them that we have seen from some of our former councillors. All members of this community have had the opportunity to be heard on many occasions. And when finally go against them, they go against them, I should say, go against the councillors that were involved in that. They resigned and they started calling names. It's the Tattie Umm reference. There are many iniquities with some of the most socio-economically disadvantaged in the state. And that's apparently what this area has caused some of those. And many of these could be the farmers and ex-farmers who live in town. I won't go through the comments I made in my original submission. Suffice to say that I made a number of suggestions as to querying the number of people employed on this council. That some things that could be done to save money in roads, in garbage collection and all those sorts of things, but I won't reiterate them now. Since I put that submission up, and this is what you get for putting the first one up, you get to stand up first, I suppose. Since then, a number of concerns have been expressed by members of the Rating Advisory Strategy Group and the following jury about cherry-picking of their recommendations by those preparing the ratings strategy and budgets. Why were these groups' reports not really available to all rate payers until very recently? One must ask why all the recommendations of these groups were not fully implemented. This is surely what community consultation is all about. A wide variety of community members who put in many hours doing what council should have done and should have already done have to be congratulated. My biggest concern is the high level of rates that we all pay, the residential in town and on one of them, or out on the farm. Particularly in the farm sector with the high increase in valuations about to be implemented. Try applying a 15% rate increase in real dollars to residential and see what happened then. What is council now going to do about furthering cost cutting? It would appear that we are all in another, in for another long ride, perhaps not as bad as I thought, trying to achieve a common sense result that the original council should have done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Miss Oddie. Any questions from councillors?
Sit down quick.
Thank you. You've probably got that time paper... I mentioned we had three minutes and you probably heard that time paper there tapping on the glass. So that's the 30-second warning. And next presenter or submitter who asked to present was Darren Ford. Darren here? Not present? We'll move on to... There was a submission on behalf of the citizens' jury members, and allegedly. And it's here. It wasn't me who was speaking, it's them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors. I was one of 25 local people selected to participate in the citizens' jury weekend. And we spent two days, as you know, deliberating a huge 250-page document prepared by the economist Trevor Coops. And to consider the report prepared by the Rating Strategy Advisory Group. We all came away from that weekend feeling optimistic that it had been a truly consultative weekend and that all groups in the community were represented fairly. All opinions were heard. And whilst there were lots of differing opinions, we came to a consensus. And we all agreed on the option presented by RSEG. I'm going to call it option three or four, I can't remember now. And we came away feeling really optimistic. When we were deliberated over the draft strategy prepared by council, we were really disappointed because our opinions weren't reflected accurately. We are yet to receive a copy of the report that we prepared on that weekend. So we don't know what information has been presented to councillors. And it's a real concern for the lack of due process. Whilst there are some areas that have been reflected in the draft strategy, which is good, the ones that haven't should be met by a very robust and strong rationale as to why our unanimous view was not reflected in the draft strategy report. So I hope, councillors, that you have the opportunity to read our report in full. We welcome the opportunity to meet with you this Friday to discuss it in more detail. And hopefully you can hear some of our opinions, but also our rationale as to why we came to such a strong consensus on that weekend. It was a privilege to be part of it. I think it's a really exciting step in the right direction to have a truly consultative, community-based approach to solving some of these problems. I personally am worried about the impact that all this division has on our community. And I hope that we can come to a fair and equitable solution for all rate payers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, councillors, any questions? Just one comment, I can confirm that councillors were given a copy, an unedited copy of the group's report. So next submitter is David Hooker. David's here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me this opportunity to address council. In relation to the draft rating strategy, I believe it has serious flaws in its presentation, lack of evidence, conflicting evidence, misrepresentation of facts. On top of that, it now appears that council has not been properly apprised of the deliberations of the RSEG or the jury. The stated objectives of fairness and equity have paid scant attention in the proposed model to savagely increase rates for the farm sector while using these increases to subsidise the general and commercial rate payer sectors. Prior to amalgamation in 1994, councils were primarily involved in property services such as maintaining roads, footpaths and drains, etc. And as such, funding to carry out these functions was appropriately gained by charging rates on the property. But it is becoming increasingly obvious for many years now that council services are people-based services which require higher council staff numbers, more infrastructure and greater funds to administer. Recently, we were given a list of the 270-odd services that council provides to rate payers. One of them, I noticed, was work cover. Why council is involved in providing work cover services, I cannot further. I would have thought that was the province of work cover authority and insurance companies. Nevertheless, it is stated as a service provided. So in the agenda that was handed around on the 8th of May, which listed one version of the draft rating strategy, I believe it is very narrow in focus, as I've said, weak in evidence. Furthermore, it discloses confidential discussions of the Ararat Rating Strategy Advisory Group. In the final meeting of the Rating Strategy Advisory Group, we prepared a report. When that report was distributed by council after RSEG had been finished, we discovered council had added further information to the bottom of it. This was never discussed by the group and was never mentioned. And I think it was most inappropriate and the words have been changed in any case as to the actual discussions that were held. Further, it is abundantly clear that council does not understand the issues around wealth versus property, taxing capacity to pay and benefit. So I think we've got a real problem on our hands. And one of the other issues that came out of the draft rating strategy rather than the agenda was a list of municipalities... 30 seconds? A list of other municipalities and the farm differential claiming Ararat was low. But the differential is not the important thing, it's the rate of the dollar. And when you look up the rate of the dollar for each of those municipalities, we find that Ararat is the second worst in Victoria. So these things were put down twice in the draft rating strategy, but it's probably there to misrepresent things and to lead people astray. So I think what we need to do is to look at a totally new rating strategy. And I think one of the things we should be doing there is look at the model that's used in the Mornington Peninsula Shire, where they have a mixed farm rating differential and a house and curtilage valuation. That would be a far better system to use. And it would be much better for this council to adopt something like that than the wild rate changes that we've had. I think that if we had a rate rise of 16 or 18% right across the general sector, there's no way this council would have allowed that to go through. So why do they allow it to go through on the farm sector? Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Our next submitter is David Hopkirk.
Good evening, councillors. Let's go through this quite quickly. There's a few farmers here disappointed at a period of illness, 55% farm differential. Well, I'm disappointed, Ararat Town is not growing and I've been given a chance to grow. I just want to clarify a couple of definitions. A regressive tax, a tax where those with the least are taxed at a higher rate than the dollar. A regressive tax has negative impact on growth, wealth sharing, prosperity and sustainability. A regressive tax, the other end of the scale, where with, for example, our income tax, those earning the most are taxed at a higher rate than the dollar. And a uniform tax, everybody in the system is taxed at the same rate. I'm not going to make any comment on uniform tax. Currently, Ararat needs to be at around 50% of the prior rating from town and 50% from farm rate payers to have a chance to reach the rates successful towns are achieving. We've tried a new concept with Rate Strategy Advisory Group. So it's not surprising we didn't get it right initially. And we know we didn't get it right when six members indicate they can support a 35% farm differential and know the effect this would have on town. We can tweak the RSEG process to refine it. For example, smaller committee of four solely farm rate payers and four solely town rate payers. And maybe a jury comprising of three independent rating experts. We're going to learn each time we review this, which is important if a four-year rating strategy is a requirement of the 2021 budget. We have to work with the system we have and negotiate. The rating system we have is not archaic, it is a diverse community rating system which works a few correctly. We know where we have to be with rates for the benefit of all rate payers and how to get the least pain is for debate. I strongly believe sustainability of a family farm means farm pay near full rates. An accountable fee, if you like, which contributes to efficient farming and keeping more of a bid on land prices. More affordable for new entrants. Without full rates over farm, mega-farmers will become super mega-farmers. They'll say we're the only ones able to afford land. And all the while, they couldn't afford to pay rates. Initially, most people think of rates and look at their own properties. But in understanding rates beyond this, it is a complex process. Along the path, there are mistruths and indoctrination. Importantly, at the end of the day, rates are a tax on your investment in community. And this is why sound taxation principles need to apply. Understand rating is a reflective process and people are allowed to change their minds along the way. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you. Our next submitter is Noel Barrow.
Madam Mayor, councillors. I was a member of the jury, so I have some insight as to what happened to the jury. And I think that RSEG and the jury combined was an opportunity for this whole council to actually get a response that was going to smooth things over. However, it hasn't happened because I think that the recommendations that were made to council have been altered, ignored and shifted around to such an extent that we've got people now that it's not smoothed over at all. Hopefully, we can get on with things. As a farmer, our rates are very high. And I realise the rates residential in Ararat are high too. To overcome that, there's got to be a reduction for both. And to shift from one sector to the other sector is not going to help. And that's what's been proposed here by putting an increase of something like 13% to 16% increase to the farm sector and a reduction for residential. I think that what the jury came up with was a good idea in that they looked at the whole pie concept. That has been ignored. That would have given stability with the differential. And I thought at the time it was a good idea. And I haven't heard an argument to say that it wasn't. The other thing that was mentioned here in the last agenda paper here was that in response to one of the jury's recommendations was that the differential rate for farmers used to be 60% and that it was lowered in 2011 to accommodate for fallout from the drought. And it hasn't been reinstated. That statement actually comes from the former mayor, Glenda McLean, who was put in the Ararat paper. I was involved with rate reviews. And there was nothing about changing rates for the drought. Are we going to change rates for a drought or frost or anything else like that? Because they're just part and parcel of farming, they're going to happen all the time. We're not going to ship rates around to suit that. So I would recommend to council that we go back and get some stability. Take what was recommended and get back to what we think is a fair and equitable rate system for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next submitter is Bruce Mackay.
Thanks, staff and mayor and councillors for giving everyone the opportunity to speak. We're getting a bit sick of this, we seem to come here every year and fight for the same things. But I just want to emphasise and support Anna and Noel Barrow. I was on the jury too and I just feel as though it was virtually a waste of time. People take little notice and we've sort of got nowhere. And all we've done since then is make it even a bigger division between rural and city people by putting up the rates for the rural farmers and dropping the rates for the city. Even though house prices have risen in Ararat as well, not to the same degree as rural properties, but it doesn't seem fair to me that one goes down and one goes up and they both have increasing values. But again, I'd like to thank for giving the opportunity. But again, I'd like to thank for giving the opportunity and thank you for saying no because everything else has been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next submission was on behalf of the Rating Strategy Advisory Group. So Sam King's going to do it. Sam?
Madam Mayor and councillors, thanks for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our submission from a large majority of the R S A G. A major concern to us is the draft rating strategy put forward by I R C C officers to the councillors. This represents the views of both R S A G and the Citizens' Jury. We make the following comments. The draft rating strategy. The draft rating strategy does not represent the recommendations of R S A G and the Citizens' Jury in its organic form, but rather critiques selective components in a very sensitive manner and directs those critiques at selected rate payer groups. This was one of the issues identified by the Commission of Inquiry last year, along with the superficial commentary on the rating position of other councils and the general assumption that rate payers with higher value properties had a high capacity to pay. Same approach is used in this draft rating strategy, still with no accompanying evaluation or substantiation. The use of median tables also criticised skew the farming category as the small acreages and hobby farmers are still within this classification and contribute to a low median value, which understated the actual impact. The draft rating strategy compares our rates low farming differential to municipalities around the state and once again is misleading as there is no reference to the rate in the dollar, which is the other major determinant along with property values, which all determine the rating burden. A prime example of this is Moyn, which border us to the south and has a hundred percent farming differential. But because of the low rate in the dollar, which they have, farming sector contribution is only fifty percent of that of the I R C C on the same value property. Use of differentials alone has been misleading in the past to the unknowing that farmers are being subsidised by the residential community. Full explanations including rates in the dollar and graphics of overall rating burden for rate payer classes needs to be used. Municipal charge. The draft rating strategy focuses on the wealth principle, but does not give due regard to the equity components of benefit and ability to pay. The draft rating strategy acknowledges that a difficulty arises where services are fully or partially public goods and is either difficult or impossible to quantify use or access. For these reasons, both R S A G and the Citizens' Jury propose a ten percent municipal charge, which comes from the total rating pool. As it was seen as the best way for addressing this dilemma. The majority of I R C C services are people services and therefore require a greater contribution from all rate payers. This could have been as much as twenty percent, which was allowable, but it was felt by both groups that this, that the ten percent was a fair contribution to be made by all rate payers. We ask that council reconsider the ten percent municipal charge. Revaluations. R S A G were aware that revaluations have been done. Incredible indications suggest these would increase farm value evaluations significantly. The Commission of Inquiry acknowledged this when it recommended the two thousand and eighteen draft rating strategy should be developed after the results of the first of January two thousand and eighteen, revaluations of property was known. R S A G were told to disregard revaluations while modelling because the definitive data was not available, notwithstanding that revaluations would impact on the equity and the stability of the final model. The draft rating strategy maintains that while the revaluations were not available at the time of preparing the rating strategy, the preliminary outcomes of the general revaluations has been used to compile the eighteen nineteen budget, both of which were released simultaneously. The Citizens' Jury proposed a pie approach and are considering the application of differentials to address the issue around revaluations and equity distribution. The narrative around I R C C's draft strategy suggests the pie approach may go against the guidelines. This inference is misleading as the legitimacy of the pie approach was directly acknowledged by the ratings expert. The draft budget. We were pleased to see the draft budget acknowledge the concerns put forward by our citizens' jury and the community in regard to the excessive amount of rating revenue council seeks to raise annually. Rates are too high across the board and the issue cannot be fixed by unfairly shifting the rating burden between rate payer classes. The draft budget commentary states that as a consequence of the community concerns, councillors committed to an organisational review. It is our sex hope that this commitment is honoured. The community's concerns include that over seventy percent of the rates charged as revenue is spent on employee costs for a single services provider. The concerns also include the range and relevance of the services delivered for this expenditure. But major note here is asset renewal commitments, which have continually given lower priority over so-called essential services. We're concerned with the imminent departure of the interim CEO, that the necessary cost cutting will be deferred indefinitely. We look forward to a revised council rating strategy which actually listens to the community and delivers on our requirements and advice of the Commission of Inquiry. Thank you.
My next emitter is Charlie DeVagley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment. Other councillors, council staff. I was not a member of the jury or this R S A G committee, so I would just make some brief comments that I think has fallen out of the proceedings of the last six months. Firstly, I think that the Citizens' Jury has come up with a model that might stop the divisiveness, which has been terrible. It hasn't been at all an advantage for our rate and in fact has only brought bad news. I think this rating cap on each different rating group within the community is a positive way to provide equity balance and transparency. And I'd urge council to consider that. The next point that I have concern about is governance and the proper process of proceedings laid out by the minister. Can I say I believe it's the role of councillors to make strategy and policy, not council staff? The last point I'd really like to make is the lack of sustainability. And I draw your attention to the inquiry into sustainability and operational challenges of Victoria's rural and regional councils done by the Parliament of Victoria this year. Excellent reading, mandatory for every councillor, I believe. It highlights many of the points we've gone through in the past twelve months. The elephant in the room is the lack of sustainability with this council along with a lot of other regional councils. And that report stresses ways or suggests ways you go back to government and stop going to the rate payer and get government to cover you where they've imposed cost and regulation and other statutory rules, which originally weren't part of a council obligation. I believe our rate, along with other councillors, needs to find ways to remain sustainable. Otherwise, it'll simply go out of existence. You cannot go back to rate payers all the time just putting the rates up. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I urge you to take on board some of the findings coming out of Citizens' Jury. Thank you.
Our next emitter is Heather Fleming.
Thank you. I have two major concerns regarding the events that we're looking at tonight. First was the lack of concern taken by council for the rating strategy advisory group and for the jury. And my second is the concern about the increase in rural rates that are occurring. I think most of the speakers tonight have covered what I would have said about the wishes of the jury and the advisory group. So I will move on more to some of my concerns about the actual figures that have been come up with through council's recommendation. And I might read this if that's all right with you. The municipal charge was dropped. That concerns me because it means that rates are less fairly distributed. I think it's important to realise that rural farmers are a very small portion, paying a very large amount. One way of spreading that burden is through the municipal charge. It's disappointing that that hasn't been taken into account as fully as it might have been. The significant shift to the rate burden to the farming sector, that's a quote taken from the report, it's regrettable. The capacity to pay argument has been used, but I think rich or asset-rich farmers, being in a group for farmers, should have their rates eased, just as it's considered that some of the urban rate payers should have their rates eased. Farmers too are the working poor, faced with factors outside our control and quest to run a profitable business. However, unlike the town and the urban rate payers, our pay is apparently not considered worthy of easing. An extension to this argument, this capacity to pay argument, would be that salary earners not relied on property to generate their disposable income, should be asked to contribute more because they have the capacity to pay. More strategies could have been offered to this group, perhaps an enhanced user-paid system. This was not considered, or if it was considered, it was disregarded as something that was simply too hard. I would ask council to reconsider that sort of suggestion. I think farmers are in a no-win situation, no more farm land will open up, properties by necessity are getting larger and yet a shrinking number of rate payers are being asked to contribute increasingly more towards rates. Farmers will never hold the balance of power and assertions that the silent majority should prevail. We just ignore the disparity between what the farm differential rate means we pay compared to what the urban differential rate means the urban payers contribute. I think, just quickly too, on behalf of our Walora community and the president of the Community Development Group, been working with council for years and years and years and years at grassroots level, just like many councillors have. And I'm extremely disappointed to see that that divide between urban and rural is exacerbated by some of the commentary that comes in the reports and certainly comments in the media that are allowed to go through. And I think especially out of Walora, we contribute a lot to this community and I think that the farmers in particular contribute to the Walora community and will suffer if these rates issues are not sorted. Thank you.
Our next emitter is Steve Shannon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors, for this opportunity. I'm extremely disappointed to be here and I'm disappointed with my own submission. It's written with a great deal of frustration, angst and again disappointment. I will read mine, which is probably a little bit out of character for me. But this budget is a glaring indictment of a council that's lost its way. With only token commitment to its core business, it continues to grossly underfund its asset renewal responsibilities. Although council has belatedly admitted to a three million dollar plus annual shortfall on road maintenance, no attempt has been made to address this problem. It is now twenty-four years since the problem began. With the result, our infrastructure is now carrying more than sixty million dollars in debt. This cannot continue. When is council going to take this seriously? At what levels of decay or debt does council intend to begin rectifying this problem? That this has been allowed to occur is either a dereliction of duty or gross negligence or both. Only local government has the responsibility for local roads. The rate payers of our rural city are paying dearly to have their assets maintained and it's not happening. No business can remain viable while letting the foundations crumble. This budget is further evidence that council has not eaten the Commission of Inquiry report in which it states on page fourteen, section nine, that council undertake a review of its current range and level of services provision to the community with a view to making structural changes that ensures it can fully fund its asset renewal requirements and remain financially viable over the long term. That's emphasised again on page twenty. If the council does not act to address the deteriorating operating trend, it will continue to build an asset renewal backlog, resulting in significant asset renewal costs in the future as assets wear out prematurely. It has happened, we are there. On page forty-one, there's no engineer in the director's position. The physical asset management and maintenance is neglected. Back-of-house functions are all over the place in the current structure. Consequently, there is urgent need for the organisational restructure of responsibilities and reporting lines. The current arrangement is halfway to where it should be. The structure is too hierarchical and hence unresponsive. The removal of culture that the service reviews engender must be completed if councillors continue to increase productivity and justify its wages and salaries bill. Yet in spite of these recommendations, council refuses to make any financial inroads on the burgeoning debt, which means that in four years, the current sixty million dollar infrastructure debt will exceed seventy million dollars and be further exacerbated by an accumulated operating deficit exceeding fourteen million dollars. That is equivalent to a whole year's rates in just four years. In formulating its budget, council for reasons best known to itself has shown scant regard for the commission, R S A G and the citizens' jury. It is obvious that the agricultural community is seen as an endless supply of revenue, justifying the latest increase in rates by comparing differentials across the number of municipalities, citing our rate as having one of the most favourable, that is fifty-five percent. This is a superficial and unprofessional comparison. Upon scrutiny, it will be seen that when taking into consideration the rate in the dollar, farm rates in our rural city remain the second highest in the state. It should be noticed that since amalgamation, the farming sector has contributed more than a hundred million dollars in rates. And for that privilege, they get to drive on substandard road network that has been neglected to the tune of sixty million dollars. Why is this figure not represented in council's accounts? And why doesn't the infrastructure appear as a depreciating asset? Twenty-four years of accumulated underfunding would highlight this massive liability to the extent that it would be the headline in council's budget. This council has serious problems. It is what the commission said it would become. Too hierarchical, unresponsive, unable to fund a sustainable renewable programme and with more than seventy percent of rate revenue required to fund staff salaries entitlements, unable to meet the service delivery expectations of the community. It is over-administered and under-managed. I'm aware that these matters have not just happened, they reflect overnight. However, council must begin to address these issues as a matter of urgency to restore an element of credibility and respect. Now would be a good time to start. Thank you for the opportunity. Any questions?
I think we're done, thanks, Dave. Our next emitter is Andrew Barron.
Councillors, congratulations, Madam Mayor and Deputy Mayor. It's with great sadness that we're back here again to struggle for a fair rating strategy. At the moment, it seems to be a common response suggesting, well, it's not as bad as it could have been. I think people have missed the point and/or been misled. The Rating Strategy Advisory Group and Citizens' Jury were put in place in good faith, believing that their recommendations would be followed through and edited, not to be picked through and applying strategy that suits certain individuals. The key messages from R S A G and the jury were made very clear. All rate payers are paying far too much in rates. Council spending needs to be brought under control. Lower the budget in regards to spending, that is equitable. And this doesn't mean cuts to aged care or similar vital services. The R S A G and jury was made up of people who nominated to participate. Any rate payer had the opportunity to do the same. I was assured by the monitor, as I was a jury member, that nobody was handpicked. I believe that all members of both groups who saw out their request were committed to a fair rating strategy. The unanimous decisions of the jury were well thought through and well discussed. Again, I was assured that council would be very unwise not to accept the recommendations given by the jury and our time would not be wasted. Prior approach to the rating strategy would have given stability to all ratepayers. If adopted, it could have even put council in the media for a positive reason, for being dynamic, unlike a lot of the attention that has been placed on council in a less than desirable position recently. Rates being aligned with wealth tax. It seems to disregard equity and disposable income for small businesses, but not so much for corporate-type businesses. It was pleasing to see some committed councillors attend a recent post-frost information session. I wonder whether it was passed on to council staff that there's been an estimated $80 million plus of wealth taken out of Ararat Rural City council ratepayers due to the frost in 2017. So where to from here? I'm not sure. It took 697 submissions in 2017, but it still took state government to intervene for council to take notice. And in June 2019, we're back here again. I ask that council adopt the unedited, unanimous decisions of the jury for a fair and equitable rating strategy.
Now, is anyone here who's put in a submission who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, who wish to do? Come forward now if you like.
Madam Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did put in a submission and whether I did put a request to speak, I'm not sure. Or have I? I might express my sincere disappointment that this issue is again dividing our whole community. Additionally, I'm extremely disappointed with disregard for the proposals developed by ARAG and the rating jury. So I was on the rating jury. We were...
You moved them on.
It's not normally a problem for me. Current proposal ignores the recommendations of both groups to increase the municipal charge to 10%, effectively ensuring the allocation of administration costs to all ratepayers equitably as recommended. In doing this but embracing a reduction in commercial industrial rates, taking into consideration the increase in rural CIP, we would effectively see rural ratepayers, a small percentage of the population, funding a very significant percentage of the rates burden. Regulations require the strategies be put in place to ensure that variations in CIPs do not cause major fluctuations in the rates burden. In the late 1980s, land in Wollora was selling up to $1,060 an acre. In 2000, similar land was selling to $625 an acre. In 2007, land sold for $2,700 per acre and two years later, neighbouring land could itself for $1,200. The recommendations of ARAG and the rating jury to look at fixed percentage contribution of the rates burden would have overcome this and the risk to non-rural ratepayers of significant annual volatility. In 2006, we experienced bushfires. In 2007, there was a drought. We subsequently seen frost, locusts, floods, low rainfall, heatwaves, low commodity prices and then extreme frosts again, as mentioned earlier. This puts into real doubt the ability of rural ratepayers to meet the increased contribution proposed for this year. All of this is signed. During 2017, the unsatisfactory process of setting a rating strategy saw us, as a rural city, embroiled in a commission of inquiry that has come a huge cost to ratepayers, community and councillors. The recommendations were clear and the criticisms plain. The Commission of Inquiry touched on many issues within the IRCC, however, commented in particular that the draft rating strategy 2017 is of poor quality and wholly inadequate as it does not make the case. Doina refers to the benefit principle, there is no consideration of other principles. The majority of councillors effectively ignored the informal consultation and rendered irrelevant. The commission finds staff appear to retain the hallmarks of the old style information and decision-making approach and are unable or unwilling to make the break into corporate strategic and policy approach to decision-making that the Act prescribes. The 2018-19 draft strategy appears to have simply perpetuated the same failings of the 2017-18 draft strategy. Considered practical, affordable and socially responsible recommendations were developed through the consultative process. However, they have been largely ignored in council's interpretation and briefing to the councillors. This may not be unexpected as the briefing provided to the jury allowed insufficient time for review and was shown to be a misleading representation of ARAG's findings, which they clarified when they addressed us for 20 minutes. Additionally, though given a brief opportunity to deliver findings to councillors at the conclusion of the jury, the promised jury report, though we're now told has been circulated to the councillors, has never been circulated to us. So we don't actually know that the report you're seeing is anywhere near representative of what we found. It appears that councillors have not been informed of the true findings of the consultative process and that the draft rating strategy fails to take into adequate consideration the findings of the Commission of Inquiry, ARAG and the jury. Until this is addressed, Ararat councillors and ratepayers are exposed. I respectfully request that you take that on board.
Thanks Anna. I just confirm councillors did have a copy of your written submission. We just admitted it will join the speakers list. Madam Mayor, that concludes the submissions that were requested to be heard unless there's any others to go away. If not, I'll hand back to you, Madam Mayor, to return to the report and there is a recommendation there, deals with all the sections.
Thank you, Mr Siria. Councillors, on page 10, there is a recommendation. Someone can't move that. Councillor Beale, second it. Councillor Rightaway. Wish to speak to the motion. Councillor Rightaway?
Nothing.
All those in favour?
So, Madam Mayor, that resolution now means all submissions have been received and they'll be considered by the council when adopting the budget on the 26th of June.
Thank you, Mr Siria. We now have a draft council plan incorporating the strategic resource plan 2017, 2021, and there is a recommendation there, councillors. Someone can't move the recommendation. Councillor Beale and Councillor Rightaway. Would anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, we should put the motion always in favour. Councillor Harry, unanimous. Councillors, and thanks very much for those presenters who were here tonight. Councillors, councillors have been provided with all of those submissions and we have read them all very carefully. I'd just like to thank those who stood up and spoke to them as well. We're trying to be as engaging as we possibly can and supporting you in our deliberations. And believe me, it's been a very difficult year for all of us. So thanks very much for you being here tonight and thank you councillors. We'll be very close.